All right, welcome. I call this April, not August yet, April 18th, Sammamish Planning Commission Meeting to Order. We are here in council chambers at Sammamish City Hall. And tonight, we have an exciting discussion about Title 24, going to be 24A. So let's start with roll call, starting on my left.
Mark Lewis is president.
Roshino Farrell.
Eric Brooks.
Mark Baughman.
Larry Crandall.
Josh Amato.
Retuja Endapri.
All right, next is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any objections to tonight's agenda? Okay. By unanimous consent, the agenda is approved. Now approval of the minutes from our March 21st meeting, which were revised a couple of times, or maybe once. So I believe it should be the April 17th version of the minutes. Has anyone had a chance to take a look at that? Any comments, or questions, or revisions, corrections? Does anyone object to approving these minutes? All right, by unanimous consent, the March 21st Sammamish Planning Commission Meeting minutes are approved. Next is public comment for non-agenda items. Is anyone interested in making non-agenda item public comment this evening?
Hello, my name's Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. For non-agenda, I see, looking at the long-term calendar, that the Urban Forestry Management Plan is going to be upcoming in May, June, and July. And I know that that's a topic that's very important to a lot of people. I don't think you'll have an empty room when you do that. And I recall, and I could be wrong because I didn't look it up, I think the last time it was on the agenda was in December, and there was a packet that actually got put in and then pulled out. And then it got moved to March, and then it got moved to June, and then I see it's going to be in front of council in October. And I remember that David Goodman was staff. I believe he's no longer with the city. I don't know if he's been replaced. But I believe that Davy Tree Resource, I think Ian Scott was the consultant, and he'll still be there, and the story map online is great. But I guess the reason I'm bringing this up is there are a lot of people that are interested in it. For a long time, council said, oh, let's throw that in the Urban Forestry Management Plan. And even what's coming forward, I believe, just sets policy. It doesn't set code, so there'll have to be code that will be changed. And since a lot of people care about trees and other things like ecosystems, I just think that we need to inform people as far ahead as possible. So I remember at one meeting, they said that whenever it does come back, it's going to be a different packet than what came before. And I don't know if that's true or not, but whatever is coming forward, if you know and you have staff, it seems like putting that up on the website, like there's actually a webpage for Urban Forestry Management Plan, it hasn't been updated in a while, if that could get updated with like a splash notice and so things. So people that are interested, they could start reading and looking, rather than just seeing it the Friday before then a Thursday that it comes up, because there definitely are a lot of people interested. I go to a lot of meetings, people are saying, hey, when is it coming up again? So I just wanted to plug that for the people that aren't here asking.
Thanks for your comments, Mary. I'm looking forward to the room being packed full when we talk about the Urban Forestry Management Plan.
Yeah, it'll be fun. Yeah, I have something non-agenda. My name, Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. On Monday night, citizens first Sammamish met, and council member or Commissioner, you know, you know, Baughman was there, and I don't think anybody else was. Oh, yes, Anne Retuja was there. Really, a good conversation about the Puget Sound Regional Council's three options on their scenarios or alternatives, if you will. And a very interesting speaker who was involved with the city at its incorporation, and knew a lot about transportation and land use planning and how all the things fit. His name was Lee Harrow, I think is how it was said. And he had some very interesting things to say. I'm not going to go through the whole litany on that, but if any of you have an interest, I'd suggest you talk with your fellow commissioners, because he's said some pretty enlightening things. Something I was always curious about, and I'll share it, because to me, I was interested in it, and it may have interest to you. King County put their metropolitan growth line, which is similar to the Puget Sound, or to the GMA regional growth line, in what is now Sammamish in roughly the 1980s. So that's when King County really started to put a lot of housing up here, and that was an interesting thing. That sort of predated the GMA by maybe 10 or 15 years. So it was just an interesting meeting to look back at what King County was doing in the past, traffic and currency, PSRC. And then after the meeting, real quickly, Don Jaren and I got on his phone, and we asked for, what's the population of all the 19 smaller cities and towns? And Sammamish, it's awesome, has gotten put into the city and town category, no longer the larger city. Means we take less growth. And Don, of course, having, you know, PhD in math, we got through and figured it all out. We got all the 19 houses, or cities, and he sent an email to the city council that if all 19 cities take an equal share, Sammamish's share would be in the neighborhood of 6,000 or 7,000 on the next go-round, except, of course, five or six of those cities are so small, all of them combined don't even equal 6,000 or 7,000. So it's just a rough swag as to where things are coming, and was kind of an interesting meeting, so I thought I'd share, because it deals with land use.
Thanks for your comments, Paul. Anyone else like to make non-agenda comments? All right, thank you. Next is old business, and it's our discussion, further discussion about Sammamish Municipal Code Title 24. And I think Miriam has a presentation on it.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Just a couple of quick housekeeping things before we jump in. So this morning, we noticed that your Exhibit 2 had been cut off. So this afternoon, we updated the full version of Exhibit 2. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and apologize for the confusion. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to look over at least the few last pages that were cut off initially, if you looked at it the night before. In front of you, you'll find a hard copy of Exhibit 1. And this is the same draft of Title 24A that you guys looked at at the last meeting. We wanted you to have it just for reference during the public hearing and for your deliberation. Pending your direction tonight, we'll use Exhibit 2, the Amendment Matrix, along with any additional changes you make this evening to update the draft of Title 24A, and then create a clean version, version 3.0, if you will. And this version 3.0 is going to be the Planning Commission's recommendation to city council. So since the last meeting, staff has taken all of your questions and comments, and we integrated those into the Q&amp;A matrix that you'll see in Exhibit 3 of your packet. And then these, along with a couple of changes from staff during our additional review, form the proposed amendments that you'll see in Exhibit 2. So at last month's meeting, we had some discussion around Chapter 24A 15, which was the noticing and public participation chapter. So I wanted to just spend a little bit of time this evening revisiting that topic and going over the changes proposed from the Amendment Matrix for that section in particular. And then we can open it up for the rest of the amendments. So just to make things a little bit easier, I did a mock-up of the track changes based on Exhibit 2 for this chapter. So for periodic updates, you'll see that we revised the requirements to include the website, the newspaper, and then opening it up for other options to be used. And we also added social media as an option at the end. And then for annual amendments, you'll see we added number 2 focused on social media. And finally, for notice for public hearings, we added in newspaper and social media as required notification tools. Are there any questions or comments on these changes, or this chapter in general?
Just one comment. I'm remembering from the last meeting, and I think this is great, especially that previous slide. But the newspaper record is the Seattle Times, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to clarify, the intent is to make it so it must be posted in the newspaper record, the city website, and social media. All three are required. That's the intent?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions or comments in any of the other amendments from the matrix?
I just had a question on, in Exhibit 2, it's number 3, and it's an addition that has been made to 24A.05.030. And I just wanted a little bit more understanding on what the change was. Was it just adding for RCWA 1 through 5, or was there any other intent?
Sure. So the intent there was, there's a certain set of categories that are exempt in the RCW, and we realized in going through and responding to what didn't get carried over from the initial Title 24, that that was kind of a hole that we didn't address. So our intent was to build in something that responded to the RCW and made sure that we had that flexibility in there specifically. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, are we doing general questions for everything right now?
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to talk for a second about a comment that was made about the three-year waiting period, and then also a comment that I had. So essentially, once a request is not docketed, right now, as I understand the revisions, it's three years until it can be resubmitted. And the two questions are, a comment was made that, is that really three years, or is it by the time the timing works out, does that turn into four years? Because by the time you're rejected from the docketing process, you end up with three years plus, or is that clear?
So the intent is three docket cycles, right? I understand what you're asking, Chair. Someone could get hitched if we were counting straight calendar days or calendar months.
Right.
And that might be a good clarification to actually make as part of Exhibit 2, in your recommendation.
Yeah, I think that that would be, just for clarity, for someone to understand what it means. I think common sense tells you what it's intended to mean, but it's probably good to put a clarifying comment in there. And then the other related comment that I had is, I am not sure, I'd be curious to know if others think this or not, certainly with land use, that makes sense to have that three-year period. I'm not sure for text amendments. I was kind of actually expecting it not to show up in here as a three-year waiting period for text amendments, because they seem like they're not as heavy of a process, and for all of those different reasons. But I believe they're still in here, aren't they?
So we actually added in the Amendment Matrix a clarification that, and we added specifically land use map amendments into the front of that.
Did that include land map use each two? I thought I read that, if I remember.
So it's, yeah, Exhibit 2, Item 9. Do you want me to read it? So what that item in your Exhibit 2 states, we're changing it from the following. A docket request is not placed on the annual docket. Any interested person, entity, or agency may resubmit a docket request for the same proposal three years after its rejection. So we're getting rid of that, and we're proposing to change it to the following. If a site-specific land use map amendment docket request is not placed on the annual docket, any applicant, as defined by code, may resubmit a docket request for the same proposal three years after its rejection. So that's the proposed language. And then we just, the item right before that question, we were talking about tinkering with the three years and making, clarifying that's three docket cycles, the rough equivalent to three years.
Realizing I'm doing this from memory, I don't have my laptop in front of me. So the other thing I remember in that category was, and I think this is what the Chair was quickly referring to, the dockets are roughly in October, November. And the submission of a docket has to be by the first Monday of August? So is that two and a half years, or is that three? I think that's what you were...
So by making that clarification to move towards three docket cycles, that would, one docket cycle would be the whole thing, 1, 2, 3, after, the third one after the one where the item wasn't docketed, you'd be then, again, eligible. So it would be less than three calendar years by the nature of when it would need to be submitted versus when city council makes that decision by resolution. But it would be the third docket cycle, which I believe achieves the intent of the original language.
That's all I had. Anyone else have comments or questions, or?
Okay.
Thanks, Mary.
Sure. So I'm going to hand things actually back to you, Commissioner Baughman, for the public hearing. And then after that, you guys can deliberate and decide if there's any other changes you want to make to Exhibit 2, or if any new amendments should be added to Exhibit 2.
Great.
Cool.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on Title 24A as a revision to replace Title 24.
You were just number 3. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name, Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. I think this presentation captured a lot of great changes. I had a lot of notes and saw that almost everything was covered, and good job to staff and you guys with all the questions. I think this is headed to a real good place. I just have a few clarifications and suggestions, and if you think them appropriate, cool, and if not, not. In the staff memo, when this gets transmitted to city council, it's not a big deal, but the environment and conservation element is an optional element. It's not mandatory. The way it's written, it sounds like it is. And the city added another optional element in the comp plan, which is great, health and sustainability, and that was optional. So all this does is keeps our language in sync with what the GMA calls for being mandatory and optional elements. On the last thing, under your Title 24 here, you're doing a repeal and replace rather than an update. So, you know, Title 24 goes bye-bye. It gets repealed in its entirety, and Title 24A takes its place. That's what happened in our comp plan. And the way it's written in the letter, it sounds like the old comp plan was adopted with changes. That's not true. The old comp plan was completely repealed and was replaced. So I just think that in a transmittal letter, having that accurate would just be correct, because that's what's happening here. A couple of comments on the code. On Chapter 24A.05.0, and I highlighted in pink, so on page 1 or page 8 of 26 on the, no, wrong, 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 wrong. Sorry, start over. On page 10 of 26, let's see, am I sort of backwards? Let me erase with the chalkboard. I jumped ahead. Erase and start over. Page 8 of 26, under Chapter 24A.05.01.0, Item Number 3. I've got three suggestions. In this paragraph, it does mention the GMA and King County countywide planning policies. But King County countywide planning policies are managed and influenced greatly by PSRC's multi-county planning policies. And during the entire comp plan process, the city had these cool charts that showed the state GMA as sort of a rainbow, and then they showed multi-county planning policies, King County planning policies, and the comp plan. So I think it's important to put in multi-county planning policies as part of our evaluations. The second thing there is, I was very happy to see the term, the goals and policies of the comp plan. I suggest that the word vision gets put in front of that, the vision, goal, and comp plan. Because everybody talks about the city's vision, that's the heart of the comprehensive plan. It's just a single-word addition. And then at the end, it took me a while to write these really shortly and succinct, but I agree with the language about official population growth forecasts and other growth indicators. I would just suggest adding language that says, and housing needs analyses, supply gaps, and statistically valid housing preferences. Those are the sources of housing needs. You get the Office of Financial Management, you get other indicators, information from the world, you have housing needs that do gaps, and you do surveys to find out what people want. All those things influence, so I would just suggest adding that. Chapter 24A.10, and that is on page 10 of the packet. Item Number H was suggest changing a, the city council may deny, approve, or modify a docket to will. There's no reason not to do something. So you just pick one of the three. Same thing goes to Item Number 2 on that same page, 2D, suggest changing should to shall. And on the next page, on page 11, Item Number 3D, suggest should to shall. So it just brings a conclusion to what was there. It's either approved, or modified, or turned down, denied. Last couple of things. On page 11, under Item 24A.10.03.01, suggest putting multi-county planning policies there again. And the last suggestion, on page 12, under 24A.10.03.0, Number 4, it reads, the amendment shall not have any adverse fiscal impact on the city. I'd strongly suggest changing it to be a lot more broad-based than that, and say the amendment, and I don't mean this to be precise, but I'm trying to lead a thought here. The amendment will not have greater adverse impacts than positive impacts from an all-inclusive, holistic, and sustainable perspective. Sometimes these things interweave, because a comp plan is an interweaving holistic document. It's not just about a fiscal impact. So I may not have this correctly worded, but the intent is to look at the sort of all-inclusive, holistic nature of a change across the entire document, as opposed to just a fiscal impact. And those are my suggestions.
Thank you for your comments, Paul. Anyone else like to make comments?
I'm Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. Just quickly, I agree with what Paul just handed out and read it, specifically adding the vision, I think, is important. The comp plan is your guiding light. The vision is the guiding light for the guiding light. And I really didn't like just saying, if it has a fiscal impact, you can't do it. So I had suggested last meeting that you at least do something like a net fiscal impact. But I really like this better, because we just shouldn't measure things based on money. It should be wider and broader. So I like those changes that he had. Since they're doing repeal, replace, I printed off the former chapter, SMC 24, to look at it. And under the general provisions at the 05, that seemed okay. On the 2410, it talks about development regulations. I was a little bit confused, because this is really the process for making comp plan changes. It's really not the process for making development code regulations changes, unless I'm confused. But if you do make comp plan changes, sometimes there are development regulations that need to get done. So if I've got that wrong, or if it means more than that, you don't have enough in there to talk about development regulations. I really, for 2415.03.0, the maps adopted by reference, I think maps are really critical to understanding the view and what everything is. So whenever we can have maps, we need to have them. I think there's no mention of it in the 24A version. Also, Chapter 24A.20 says basin plans, that's about stormwater. There are basin plans that are currently adopted. I first learned about this reading Wally Perea's attorney, Rick Amberloo, had brought up that this is adopted. If it's not going to be in Chapter 24, it needs to be somewhere. And in the matrix, it says it can be added to Title 13. And I would say, if you're taking it out of this, you shall add it somewhere, or make sure that it is incorporated by the existing code somewhere else. Because the East Lake-Sammamish Basin Plan and Nonpoint Action Plan, it's actually the 1994 version that ended up being the latest. That's a basis for a lot of things still going on, even with the smaller basin plans that we're working on. So I'm specifically interested in that. I don't know as much about the Izua Creek one, because that's in the south end, and I deal more with the middle and northern end of the city. And then I just wanted to flip through the pages I have from the printing. I didn't listen to what my comments were from the last meeting, but I think I'm catching most of them here. I really like the idea that staff has that there will be an area-wide map versus the specific zoning map. I think that needs to go forward. I think it's too hard to do the double hoop jump-through that we need to do now. I like the fact that there is a deadline that's mentioned for the August, but I'm very concerned about smaller changes should have either a different route or a shorter route than bigger changes. We've talked about the errata sheet, that the city adds in that they could do the errata sheet, which they say they can't, or there's some changes for that. You just don't want to have the little things, like recently, there's a lot of commotion at one of the city council meetings on what's the trails, bikeways, pathways plans, which got renamed the non-motorized. Was it a plan? Was it real? That's one of the changes in my docket item. We just can't go year after year after year not making small changes. So want to make sure that they can be done. And if they aren't done for one year, because there's too many things going on, they ought to be able to be submitted the next year. You shouldn't have to wait two and a half or three years to do it. I think that's very important. And I think the same person should be able to bring it up, or anybody could bring it up, or they could bring up something slightly different. I also felt that the code was repetitive, like it talks about the docket request process on page 9, and then on page 10, it kind of repeats the same thing. And since you're rewriting it, if there's any way to double a section and refer to that, instead of just having the same code twice, I think that's a better way to write On the 90 days, I'm assuming it's just calendar days, that you're not counting for holidays, or if Christmas ended up being in there, you're not giving those people a week off. I don't know if you want to specify that. I did have a note on the ad, that you couldn't have a net, you couldn't have an adverse fiscal impact, and I've already covered that with a net, or I think Paul's suggestion to have a wider purview that you're looking at, I think is very important. Just, so a couple, I think it was the last retreat that the city council had. There used to be two public hearings for everything, and it was brought up that, you know, people don't come a lot, they don't talk. Could it be brought down to one? And I said, you know, if you're not making the changes in the first public hearing, you're not hearing us the second time. So I'm all for one public hearing, because staff has a lot of time, we spend a lot of time. But the really important thing is, is if you're going down to one public hearing, you really need to take people's input, take it hard, and make the changes. Because it's very hard to get a single-word change. It's really hard to get a sentence changed. It's super hard to get a concept change. It shouldn't be that hard. If you're really valuing public input, we should be able to get into the matrices, whether we're an individual person, or a group, or if we're bringing up things. So I just think that's really important for you to know. There are a few things that I think require two public hearings legally, but otherwise, you really want to get one public hearing, so it's super important. If you hear one thing I say, if you don't write it down, if you don't bring it up, doesn't matter what I say at the mic, you guys have to ask for it and bring it up. So that's an important thing for you to know in your role that you do. In the small group of properties, you have three or six contiguous properties. In the Inglewood area, an individual owner, in order to build an R4 lot, will own four particular lots. So I like the fact that it was a little bit bigger than that. Then I was just talking about the timeframe with when you could really apply and what the time loop was. That definitely needs to be clarified. You might say that they could apply at the date due for the next cycler within, you could talk about the cycles or the due date, that instead of the three years, I think that would be easier. It just needs to be worded clearly. Like I said, I think anybody should be able to bring it up, again, not limited to who can bring it up. can bring it up. And I think I've covered everything else that I've underlined here. But in general, I wanted to thank, oh, the other thing is, is when you talk about a director, sometimes in stormwater code, they'll say the director or designee, because sometimes the director's out, or that they offer it to somebody else. And that just gives you, they did the same thing in the Public Works Standards, based off of comments that I gave. I think that's just smarter for yourself. And if Jeff's around, he can do it because he's our esteemed leader, but if he's not, he could do it. And then again, just on page seven of Exhibit 3, it says the basin plans could be moved to Title 13, and I think they need to be moved. So thank you for all the work, and thanks for giving the references on where we could look up the stuff so we could review well today. That was awesome.
Thank you for your comments, Mary. Anyone else like to make comment as part of the public hearing? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. One thing I do want to mention, based on my experience here, is that we value the comments that everyone makes. When we get into this technical stuff, it's very helpful if we can get some of that ahead of time, because it's very challenging to keep up and make those, review those comments on the fly with this kind of technical stuff. So for what it's worth, that's a suggestion. Okay. So now we need to make a motion, and then we can get a second, and then we can have discussion about this, make amendments and so forth. So I believe there's a motion, recommended motion included on the, it's either on the agenda or on, yeah, it's kind of towards the bottom of the first page. If someone feels comfortable making that motion.
I'll make a motion. I move the Planning Commission recommend to City Council the adoption of the new Title 24A is drafted in Exhibit 1 and further amended by the Planning Commission in Exhibit 2 of the April 18, 2019 packet materials.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Planning Commission recommend this new Title 24 to the City Council. Is there any discussion?
I guess I'd like to talk a little bit about the adverse fiscal impact that we started on last week. I think that's an important aspect of this process. I'd like to understand exactly what that means, how we determine adverse fiscal impact, and if it needs to be in there, if it can be changed. There's some suggestions on it, so. Okay, well, I guess.
I'm just waiting in case someone else says. I actually agree with you. I'm a little, I had, remember, we talked about that, and then I didn't make any notes on it. I am a little uncomfortable with the lack of definition of that term. If we're going to use the code, I think it probably should have enough words in it that somebody could use it for a purpose. And in that case, I don't know, how do you decide what is an adverse? And I need to look, I need to pull that up so that I have it right here. But how do you define, how would you, what's the bar? How do you use that practically? I'm just a little worried that I'm having trouble envisioning how you would actually, what kind of a situation you might use that in.
It's on page 5 of your packet there, Mark, as well. What do we think about the language that Paul suggested? The amendment will not have greater adverse impacts with positive impacts from all-inclusive, holistic, and sustainable perspectives.
I guess I don't really have an issue with it. My only concern is this, we're putting in here something that should be measured, and I don't know how you measure that.
I guess I could chime in and say, on top of Josh's comments, how do you decide if it's positive, negative, then to measure it? You almost have to make a decision, is it adverse, or?
Depends on your point of view.
Yeah, that's.
So we, I recall, perhaps in March, I think, the last time we talked about this subject, we did have a discussion surrounding criterion for the adverse fiscal impact. And from what I recall from that conversation, the point that was trying to be made there was the city doesn't want to be left on the hook for infrastructure, I think was the example we used during that conversation, down the road at some point, by some sort of action that it takes to, you know, to upzone a property, or I think primarily we were circling around the site-specific map type of changes here, as opposed to, you know, a text amendment change in one of the elements of the comp plan. So I think we, by way of that conversation, at least from the staff perspective, I believe our thinking was we ended up kind of with this language. Our legal counsel also reviewed this language and was good with it. If you don't like that number four, the way it's written, we could make a change, you know, the one, while you've been talking here for the last few minutes, one change that's popped into my mind is we could put some sort of term, instead of adverse impact, a net zero, a fiscal net zero to the city or something. We want to be sure that we're not considering and potentially approving something that, you know, again, the taxpayers, the city is going to be on the hook for down the road. That's going to be a cost burden to the city. Mr. Stickney's proposed change, so I guess from a staff perspective, if the commission is struggling with how we're going to measure number four as it's written in your packet, I'm really not sure how we're going to measure number four proposed by Mr. Stickney. So, sorry, sorry, Paul.
Subjective.
Yeah. So I wouldn't recommend moving forward with the public comment suggested version, but if you want to tinker with that number four, what we'll do with it is we'll take it back to our legal counsel before we get to City Council. And that's something I would definitely want legal counsel to review, but we can, we can have the commission tinker with the language tonight. We'll take that to our legal counsel, and we'll report to the City Council on the legal review of that on May 14, I think, when we present to them your recommendations.
So can I ask, I believe, if I'm recalling the process correctly, there is an evaluation of the proposed amendment along the process, so that if there was at least a foreseen financial impact, there would be opportunity for that request to be denied through the process, right?
Through, yes, through the process we're discussing here this evening, that's correct.
Because it's, to me, it seems reasonable that someone could propose something that they didn't necessarily understand the full impact. But the process through the staff evaluation, and hopefully Planning Commission, certainly council discussion, I would presume that if there was something that any of us knew had a substantial financial impact, that would be part of the discussion. Then my question is, so we would know, or think we knew, would that be, would there be any reason that council could deny a request on that basis?
Well, I think that's why the decision criteria is being.
But if it wasn't in there, could they do that?
Well, I think your hill that you have to climb to get there from a findings perspective with the other three decision criteria then gets probably steeper, right? So having that, and having that in your code specifically maybe short-forms that argument potentially in some sort of legislative review.
Yeah.
This is something, not necessarily these exact words in number four, but this is a type of decision criterion that you do see typically with other jurisdictions in this type of process. This is not custom to Sammamish, or something that we've cooked up specifically for your consideration, so. And our legal counsel.
Sorry. No, I just actually wanted to ask clarifying questions. So my understanding is you're not averse to using number four, but you just want to know how it will be measured, right? Like, what does adverse financial effect mean?
Can I just respond? I think part of the challenge here is, is $5,000 an adverse impact? Is $500 an adverse impact? Is $5 million an adverse impact? Most of us could answer a lot of that, but there's some gray area where it's not very, and you may not even know what that number is upfront. So it's not easy as a criteria to use because you don't know. It's in the range of $50,000 to $2 million. Well, what does that mean? How do you, it's just subjective enough, it's hard to use. I think that's part of the question.
And that would be something that would fall upon the council to take a decision based on all the input that they would have and access to other financial information, right?
And your recommendation as well.
And our recommendation.
Yeah. So maybe, maybe what we're getting to here a little bit is proportion, right? Disproportionate shares. So I agree with you, Chair. You're going to have some instances where the public may be contributing a proportionate share, and again, we're using infrastructure as the general example here, of a proportionate cost share of an infrastructure improvement, where we don't want to get caught, is where we're, it's not necessarily, because you could say, well, is $1, is the city spending $1 on, you know, an infrastructure improvement too much money? Should this proposal, any proposal we'd be considering with this criteria, be paying for the entire thing? Well, no, not necessarily. You get into proportions, right? If there's going to be a public benefit to that infrastructure being deployed and built out, maybe there is a proportionate share for the city. So does that make sense where we're, maybe it's less about a dollar amount, it's more about disproportions and appropriate portions of cost?
Commissioner Amato?
I'm sorry?
Did you have a comment?
I would like to hear what you have to say to respond to. I guess, well, I can.
I would think it would be hard to put a dollar amount there.
Yeah.
You know, because you're not sure what you're going to come up against, so I see why the language is the way it is, because it's hard to say, well, anything below $5,000, that's not an adverse effect, or whatever, you know, number you'd like to kind of pull out of the sky. So I think it's going to be hard to kind of put a value on it, like a dollar value. I don't think you could do that.
I agree. But practically, when the evaluation is being discussed, that's how it will be discussed.
Yeah, but I suppose it would be also discussed in relation to a whole lot of other issues and a whole lot of other elements to the discussion, and the dollar amount or something will be one of them. But then, when you look at other things, it says, you know, changing circumstances, changing community values, correcting information contained in the plan. So there's a whole lot of different elements that'll go into that decision, money being one of them, but not the only one. And so it would be, I would imagine, in that decision, you're going to weigh up the community benefit with how much money it's going to cost, and all the other elements to, all the other three elements to it. So I can see why, you know, because I, we kind of talked about this the last time, so I can see why the language is kind of, in kind of a way, just very short and simple, because it's kind of a hard one to kind of redefine in any other way. And if it's something that other jurisdictions already kind of address it in this way and use this language, you know, this particular sentence, so I'm assuming it's kind of a tried and tested situation. So I just, I don't know if, you know, if other jurisdictions haven't defined it in any other way, is it necessary to?
So the other thing I'll add really quick is, when we're in these types of actions, right, whether, you know, site-specific land use map amendments and/or rezonat-type applications, we don't, a lot of the time, a vast majority of the time, the majority of the information that we're working with there is planning level, type of data and type of information, right? So we have our comp plan, we have our, you know, our capital facilities plan, and we have our TIPs and so forth. So that's all planning level, planning level work that's done. We're not always going to have an exact dollar amount for, you know, a road extension, or, you know, a road connection. We're going to be dealing in those planning level materials. So it's, we do have some degree of specificity. We know generally what the city has examined in those planning level documents. We know what we get in the application. We've got to marry those things together and come up with something reasonable as to, you know, for example, what our city engineer thinks in terms of, you know, the likely cost, the planning level cost of that road extension, and whether there's going to be, again, that adverse impact to the city or not. What do we anticipate as a result of the action that's before the legislative body? You know, if you're, if you're taking a, you know, a piece of property, and you're proposing a site-specific map amendment to the comp plan to change it from an R4 to an R6, by way of an example, and there's going to be this amount of infrastructure deployment necessary to accommodate that change, just my sense, sitting here, just running this through on the spot, there's a, there's a high likelihood that there's going to have to be some consideration towards the fiscal impact of that, right? If you're doing something else, like you're going from an R4 to, you know, an R24, which I don't even think we have on our map, but you get the point, a much larger change, with that same road connection, there's a chance there might be a lesser fiscal impact to the city because the developer or that development would be carrying a heavier cost burden of something that essentially is going to be the same cost, right? So that gets back to adverse fiscal impact and, you know, what we have to work with when we're working through this type of legislative process.
Commissioner Crandall?
Yes. I kind of want to interrupt because I've already spoken, but maybe this could be run by legal. Read number three, and where the semicolon comes into effect, if that's a period, have nothing after that. Because in a way, greater public interest represents an action that best serves the entire, fiscal is part of the best interest. So is number four even needed legally? I'm actually going there. Because if you say adverse fiscal impact, I'm looking at, you know, climate, all these other adverse things, and it seems like number three takes care of that.
I would respond, Commissioner Crandall, to your question with a question. Are there things of great public interest that have great adverse fiscal impact? I think we could probably find some, so.
Josh, did you have more comments?
I didn't understand the question you came back with to Commissioner Crandall.
Are there, are there things that, are there things that a public entity can do of great public interest that are of negative fiscal impact? I mean, there's lots of things, right, so that we could do. I mean, just sticking with the infrastructure example, we could go build, you know, miles and miles of new infrastructure on the taxpayer burden. It's a, it's a great public interest to everybody, but it's also of great adverse fiscal impact as well, right? So.
So I guess my challenge with having number four in there, I think number three kind of takes care of that because it precludes us from considering an amendment if it has any adverse fiscal impact. And I think that really is a political decision the council has to make based on what they think their constituents believe, and what the commissions, the Planning Commission's recommendation is on whether it's a great, greater public interest. That's one of the items they're balancing, and it seems like we're precluding them from making that decision if there's, you know, any adverse fiscal impact. It just can't be considered as an amendment. And I guess I have a challenge with that because it just takes away their decision-making authority on a, on an item.
But I think maybe when we talk about, so yeah, like, so everything we do will have a financial impact, okay? And I think it will be up to the council and public comment, everyone, to decide what's adverse.
Well, I.
You know what I mean?
I understand, I believe, but the start of the section says that we can recommend, or the council may approve, or approve with amendments, an amendment of the comprehensive plan if, and then these items. And so if there is a fiscal impact, they can't even consider it because, or a negative fiscal impact, they can't consider it because item four precludes them from doing so based on, am I reading that correctly?
So I would think, and maybe you are, when I read it, I think that what it means is that through the discussion of this particular decision, the group, if you like, will decide what the adverse financial impact is, and if, what the financial impact of this decision will be, and is that adverse or not. will be and is that adverse or not. You know what I mean? That, yeah.
I do.
So that's why I, I think it should be there because I think it has to be defined as number four because that's part of the discussion. So we're deciding to do X, whatever it is, and there's a financial impact on the city on this particular issue. Is that, is that worth it? Is that a positive impact on the city and we're willing to pay for it? Or is it too big a burden on the city financially and no, we can't? So I think, and I'm sure you're not suggesting otherwise, of course, that financial issue would have to be discussed. So I think it's worth singling it out as a, as an issue, is my point anyway.
Yeah, I just, if the council gets to decide what adverse means, that's what I, and I think that's hinging on your point, too, is that's exactly kind of what I'm thinking is that I don't know if the council gets to decide what adverse means in this situation.
Okay, Commissioner Nefery.
I have a question. If, what if the and gets changed to an or? Does that help for all the, all the four or, you know, the three criteria?
So it'd be one plus two plus three or four?
No, one or two or three or four. So right now, the way it reads it, it has, it's an and at the end of each criteria. So that means all of it has to be satisfied to make the decision. And if we put it as an or, that means if it was any one of these criteria, then it would, that could be used as a decision criteria. So I think your intent is that, but I think the and actually makes it really restrictive. As Josh said, you know, if one item, one recommendation has a fiscal impact, but it might benefit, you know, from all the other three, then we're not going to recommend it, right? So I think if you put it to an or, that might open up the space a little bit more.
But I think it has to be all of them. I think it has to be an and. I'm sorry. I just feel like it has to be an and.
Some of them are actually, like, multiple are required by the RCW. So I think the last two, there'd be some flexibility for, but the first two would have to be and.
Okay, so maybe or just for the three and four or two?
So Mary actually has an idea. She's passed me a note here in class. Go ahead and spin it and see how it goes.
My unfinished edit modifies number three to say, "The amendment is in the greater public interest and represents an action that best serves the entire community, taking into account the fiscal impact, comma, whatever else y'all would like to add." And then that would enable us to eliminate number four, but also have it taken under consideration.
I will say, I was sitting here trying to think about how to reword number four in a similar way, something, you know, that the financial impact would be evaluated or something, but that's actually more efficient, quite a bit more efficient, so. Are there any more comments about this?
Well, I think it does get to the, to the idea that was brought up earlier, but we're kind of mixing the things. The financial isn't the only thing. It's one of many things, and I think that achieves that goal. So if the commission, if that change is something the commission would like to include, Chair, you may want to seek a motion to add an item 20 to exhibit two, which would, why don't I read it and then someone can say, so moved? Let's try that. So a new item to exhibit two would be item 20, and it would be an amendment to 24A10020.
030.
And where are we here?
030. 030.
030, thank you.
Decision criteria.
2410030, decision criteria, and it would be modifying sub three, which would then read, "The amendment is in greater public interest and represents an action that best serves the entire community, taking into account the fiscal impact." And then we would also then delete, we would strike sub four.
So moved.
All right.
It's been moved and seconded to make an amendment as stated. Is there any discussion about that?
I'm really happy that we get to consider the financial impact of any changes we make, but not be bound and bogged down and restricted by that.
I agree. I think it gives future commissions and maybe even us and the council tools to use, and that's really what this is all about. Okay? So we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Amendment's passed. Okay, back to the main motion. Other comments, questions, or revisions you'd like to talk about in the rest of the language?
Is it possible to suggest that all the, you know, public comment items be put into the matrix? I mean, I see that there's others in here from the public comment. Is it, can we do that wholesale or do they need to be introduced one by one? What's the thought there? The public testimony from this evening? Is that the question?
Yes.
Yeah. So if you want to go, so I'd be prepared to go through Mr. Stickney's comments, Ms. Wichter's. I scribbled a few notes. I mean, just honestly, I wouldn't be able to go through all of her, her comments from the public testimony right now. What I would be happy to do is if Ms. Wichter wanted to put those in writing, if she has not already, we could certainly take a look at them and prepare for the city council review of this and take those into account at that time. So the council would be able to consider those.
So can I suggest if we want to talk about Paul's comments, maybe we can kind of group them together a little bit, which he's actually kind of done here under this. Let's just talk about these, the first three under his comments, comment on chapter 24A.05. And I don't know that we, I think we should take them individually. So I'd open it up for comments on any of those.
I think that the third point is, is a meaningful thing to really kind of drill down and maybe augment the criteria for how things get updated. I think that he's brought up a lot of important points about these types of gap analyses and statistical, statistically valid preferences and things like that. And it really seems hard to avoid having that information to make really good policy going forward.
I have a couple of comments on this section, but I want to make sure everyone else has a chance to comment first. So a couple of comments I have. I would be curious if, the first one, multi-county planning policies, in kind of the context of what we were just talking, got done talking about, I would like to see things, if we're going to put things in here that they have some meat to them or some fact-based, or they point to something. So in this case, multi-county planning policies, I would like to understand, is there something we could point to that would, that would reference? It's, the more you have those type of references, the more open-ended it gets. And so then what, how much work do you go through and what do you reference? If there's something specific we could reference and say, that is the multi-county planning policy, and it would fit within the criteria of Title 24A, I think that would be okay. Vision, both Mary and Paul commented on that, and I think it's a fine thing to put in. It's also pretty subjective as well unless it's defined somewhere, and maybe that's true that it's defined somewhere. The last one, I understand, my question or hesitation about that is if this doesn't exist, even though it should exist, if it doesn't, then what does that mean for what we're, what language we're putting in here? I can't envision that that drives us to have to do something, but perhaps. Or if it just doesn't exist and is not likely to exist in the near future, is there value in adding language to? I'm talking about the statistically valid housing preferences. So any comments on any of that?
I have a couple of comments on the three items in general. So in exhibit two, your item one in exhibit two is actually proposing to change that item of code. So I'll just read it so it's kind of into the record here. So the change would be to amend the portion of that item three, which says, "Official population growth forecast and growth indicators." Amend that to the following, "The Office of Financial Management's Population Projections, the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050, King County's Urban Growth Capacity Study, and the Washington State Department of Commerce Review and Evaluation Program." So I think that would certainly address the first item there from Mr. Stickney. The second item regarding the comp plan, I was actually looking at that as he was speaking, and then I was looking at this handout, and I would actually propose to do something a little bit different, to go in the opposite direction. Rather than start spelling out every single kind of piece of the comp plan here, so right now, we've got goals and policies, and then the idea was to add vision to that, I would just remove goals and policies and just simply state the Semamish Comprehensive Plan, which embodies it in its entirety, right? So, so that, I would certainly offer that as, what item are we on in exhibit two? Item 21? That could be an item 21 to exhibit two would be to remove the goals and policies in front of the Semamish Comprehensive Plan. Item three, Chair, I think I agree with your assessment of that. So I don't have anything further on that.
So at this point, we would be making another amendment. So if someone would like to move to make another amendment to remove the words, "Goals and Policies," I think that's it, right?
Yeah, so from, from...
Oh, of the...
From 24A050010, purpose, sub three, you'd be removing the words, "the goals" and "policies of."
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to remove the goals and policies of as stated. Any comments? Is everyone okay with that or?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor of that amendment? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. Amendment passes.
Can I make a comment on the, the public comments by Mr. Stickney about the may, should, and shall? And hopefully, and I'm not an English teacher, and I struggle with this, but each one of those is preceded by a shall. So in a way, you've already said shall, and then you're going, or may, and then I would say leave it because it's really, take the last one, if I can read it. Well, I guess, I don't, I still have my teeth thing in here, but in number, well, okay, take, maybe I'm not making any sense, but you've already said shall in the first, so somebody help me on this. I think, I think it's worded correctly. You say they shall do things, and then they should go over one of these other things. And in that first one, may, placement of a docket request on the annual docket does not mean that it will be approved by the city council. The city council may deny, approve. You already said it doesn't mean it's going to be. So I think leave those three the same. That's my take.
I would, I would comment that I like Mr. Stickney's suggestions. However, this implies that it would be somehow further binding on the council to do something, and they will do what they choose, whatever the words say. So I'm not, maybe it's correct English. I'm not very good at evaluating that. Beyond that, I don't think it probably has a great deal of bearing on what will really happen practically.
The two, so the, of those three offerings, we're on 24A10 now of Mr. Stickney's comments. The latter of the, the two latter items of those three, so 0202D and 0203D, those are under the section of code related to the actual legislative review of something that's already been docketed. I guess what I noted during the testimony, and I've been thinking about a little bit, is there's actually other options at the city council's disposal when they're going through that legislative review. So for example, they could choose to remand a particular item back to the planning commission. They could actually choose to remand the item all the way back to staff if they choose to, and then to have it come back through the planning commission again. They could choose to, and this has happened in my career before, they could choose to docket something at some point in time and then, for reasons, i.e. the Great Recession back in the late 2000s, suspend the processing of items that have been docketed till some later point in time. So there's, there's other options. So to, to, as the commission has already noted here, to box the legislative body into one of those three choices, I think would be, would not be the right thing to do. So I would recommend leaving the should language as is on those two items. Regarding the one that Commissioner Crandall spoke to, which would be the first of those three items, the 0103H. Just let me find it here again. Yeah, okay. So that proposal would be the city council will deny, approve, or modify the docket request at its discretion. I'm more okay with that than the latter two that I just spoke to because we really do, when, when someone does submit something for docketing, we really do try and get a result during that, that year's docket process. So to, to offer that the council will actually make a decision in that year that something is brought forward as a docket request, I think is reasonable, so. Whether that's compelling you to change the language or not is another question, but I'm just, that's a staff perspective on that, so.
I just quickly, I'm actually, can you point me exactly to the should and shall? Because when I'm looking at my copy, I already see a shall in here. So, okay, so that has already been changed, so it's not a should, right? That's what you're saying?
So if you look on page three.
Yes.
Item D towards the bottom.
Oh, that's the should, okay.
Yep.
Now I see it.
And there's a similar one on the following page.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yep, now I see it.
I have a quick comment. I agree that the may to will is, is all right, not that big a deal, but the other two should remain the same.
I guess I'd go back to it, "The placement of the docket request on the annual docket does not mean that it will be approved by the city council." Why, again, could we stop there? Because then you say will again, you say it will be approved. At first, you say it doesn't have to be, but will is one of those choices on that third one. Makes it approve?
This is a healthy exercise in English that we're going through here. Those, those sentences actually, now that we've gotten into it, might actually be more compelling if they were reversed. So if H actually read, "The city council will deny, approve, or modify a docket request at its discretion," and then the second sentence then would then read, "Placement of such a request on the annual docket does not mean it will be approved by the city council." The reason why that, as it's written now, the reason why the first sentence is there is a qualifier statement that just because something gets placed on the docket does not guarantee its ultimate legislative approval, right? To amend the comp plan or to change the land use map. So to reverse those two sentences, they're going more in chronological order of events. You consider the docket first, "The council will act on your docket request in one of these three fashions." If a... If it gets on the docket, doesn't mean it's going to receive ultimate legislative approval at the end of the day.
I might
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I might also suggest clarifying in the first sentence where we're saying placement of a docket request on the annual docket does not mean it will be approved by the city council, it really is the amendment proposal, so maybe swapping out it with amendment proposal to clarify that that correlates to the legislative review. Just something to further think about.
That one sounds like a staff adjustment post-meeting to me. The first one, though, do we need to make, make a motion to amend?
Yeah, so
To reverse those?
Yeah, I think we do. So what item are we on now? So
This would be another amendment? We've had two amendments approved so far, and this would be the third one. And we'd be like on number 23, maybe?
22. So a new item to Exhibit 2, item 22, would be the following. H would be struck in its entirety as-is and replaced with the following. The city council will deny, approve, or modify the docket request at its discretion. Placement of such a docket request on the annual docket does not mean the amendment request will be approved by the city council.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to modify the language as described. Any further discussion about that?
Is the, if the goal is to make it so the city council must either do one of the three things, deny, approve, or modify, I don't know that changing it to will, I'm not an attorney, and I don't know if there's any in here, but I don't know that changing it to will requires them to do so. I think if you require them, I think it needs to be a shall, but I don't know. But if that's our intent, then I think we need to have an opinion on that before, you know, approving this, because I don't think that we're doing what we're, our intention is if, if that truly is our intention to make them do one of those three things.
But when you reverse it, now you're giving them the choice, they may deny, approve, or modify.
I thought it was changed to, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought it was changed to the, they will deny, approve, or modify.
No.
No, okay, then ignore me. I apologize. No, that's, actually, you're correct, that's what I said.
You said will?
I was accepting the word will from the public testimony. So I do, I actually do concur with the public on this. We really do seek a docketing request decision from the council each year. I think the, I don't want to speak for the, the public testimony, but, but if I had to guess, the intent was that changing the should to something else, whether it's will or shall, will guard against having docket requests languishing and possibly not being acted on in that year that they were, they were brought forward as a request to the city council. So if you're, if you're comfortable with that, that's fine. If you're not, then stick with should, which is in there now, and it would take an amendment to the amendment. Sorry, Chair.
Is sub H?
H, yeah.
I think that generally speaking, will and shall are synonymous.
So this is
I don't think there's much difference.
This is going to sound really nerdy, but as I was drafting this code, I did some research on code terminology, since this is an area that's new to me, and one of the things that I read was if it's mandatory and something that should be done, then it is shall. So just something to think about as you're deciding on what language to land on.
So does that mean that shall and should are the same thing?
No.
It means that will and shall are the same thing.
Okay.
I think should is compelling and shall is demanding.
And to me, as a non-lawyer, it just, to me, it all means the same thing. If I'm a member of the public picking this up, and I'm going to make it, you know, try to get something on the docket, all those words mean the same thing to me.
It's not a difficult change to make, and it's also not difficult to let it pass. So if you'd like to change it, then we should make an amendment to the amendment, and then we'll navigate our way back out of that.
I just wanted to clarify the intent of what we were trying to do.
Okay.
So I'm fine with it as-is.
Thank you. Any other comments on this amendment? Okay, let's vote on the amendment, amendment as presented. All those in favor of this amendment? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. Okay, that third amendment of the evening passes. The last item, I think perhaps we haven't talked about is, right, next to the last one on Mr. Stickney's list here, which is 24A 100301, which is where, in the, in the earlier section, 010, paragraph 3, we made the change, the change was made in the Exhibit 2, which I think added the Puget Sound Regional Council. This is really kind of the same thing, unless there's any reason not to do that. It seems like it could be appropriate here, but I think it's the same general concept.
Sorry, Chair, can you tell me where we're at right now?
Okay, so we, I'm looking at 24A 10030.
That's decision criteria?
And it's number 3, no, number 1, I'm sorry.
Number 1, okay, okay.
And here we reference GMA, countywide, which is King County, and other provisions of the comp plan. And in, in a similar fashion to that reference up above in 24A 10010, we made a modification in Exhibit 2 to add some language, the primary part of which I recall was Puget Sound Regional Council. I think it would be fine to add it here. I'm
Okay.
Open to that. That seems like a reasonable comment, but I don't know what everyone else on the commission thinks.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
I think it asks for staff input, right? Like saying, why is this different, or why should it be?
I, I think we just made a change in one place, and probably we could make the same exact change here, and it does the exact same thing.
Yep.
Yeah, do you have that? Yeah. Unless, is there any, I mean, this is under decision criteria, it seems like it has the same effect to me, so I Sure.
But Chair, are you moving to say that this should be updated with what we have in Exhibit number 2, number 1?
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. Applying essentially the modification in number 1 of Exhibit 2 to this language, 24A 100301. So can I count that as a motion?
Yes.
Commission, do you?
I second.
Okay. So I moved and seconded to modify Chapter 24A 10 dash dot 030, paragraph 1, in a similar fashion as item 1 on Exhibit 2, to add a broader public agency, in this case, I think it's the language references the Puget Sound Regional Council. That's our Fourth Amendment, so is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, Fourth Amendment passes. Were there any of Mary's comments that anyone captured that we could talk about or should talk about?
I wanted to talk about a couple, if you don't mind, just really quickly.
Okay.
So Mary did mention the maps adopted by reference, and one of the things that Legal mentioned was, we don't have to have things like adopted by reference in the code itself because it will be integrated into the comprehensive plan, which is why we've left it out of this version. Basin plans, we had Legal do a review, so Public Works is currently looking at, does it move into Title 13? Does it move into the comprehensive plan and finding a place for it so that it doesn't just get dropped? And then Mary also spoke to pushing through smaller changes and the errata sheet, and so one of the items that isn't going to show through in code, but is an administrative change, is when we do the application form for the amendments, we would have something that's much more simplified for small corrections and errors. And that way, it will be less burden on the applicant to bring those to our attention. So I just wanted to talk through those. Is there anything else that you'd like to add?
Yeah, a couple of other comments, actually. Just to make sure we're all on the same page, including the public, the, the new Title 24A will also be the procedures for development code amendments. So there was a, that question was raised in public testimony to you here this evening. So what that means, the big change, what that will mean for us here in Sammamish, is development code amendments will actually go through the docketing process as well. And after our city attorney took a look at state law and did some research, we need to be following that process for development code amendments as well. It's not, the practical implications of that are not great for us, because we are now, we've gotten to the point, over the last five years, where now we're work-programming out a full year or more in advance anyway. So to bring forward as part of the docket process, you know, an update to Title 24, an update to Title 21A, whatever it is, we have the ability to do that. We're, we're planning and budgeting that far in advance now. So it's, it's not a big change for us. It's a procedural change more than anything. But, you know, to, to one of the public comments we heard at the beginning of the meeting tonight about letting folks know about, you know, the urban forestry planning effort that's going on, the docketing process is a way of getting that type of information out there early as to what we're going to be up to for the next year, so. So anyway, so that's that. So this chapter does include procedures for development code amendments, not just comp plan. I wanted to clarify that for the commission and for the public.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone have any other comments or questions about?
Well, this is more of a comment, and I won't name names, but there was kind of a feeling and maybe a karma in this room tonight, but the public may speak. The public's encouraged to speak, the public did speak, and the public was heard, and the public input was valued and discussed, and some of it has resulted in changes. And I think that's, that's great. It's, I guess I wish it was a larger group sometimes, but thank you for your input.
I second.
All right, if there's nothing further, I think we can go ahead and vote on this. So it's been moved and seconded that the Planning Commission recommend the city council the adoption of the new Title 24A, Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations Amendment Procedures as drafted in Exhibit 1, and further amended by the Planning Commission in Exhibit 2, and further amended within Exhibit 2 with amendments this evening during our discussion. And so collectively, that includes the draft language of 24A, Exhibit 2, and four amendments, that we will recommend those to the city council. All right? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No? Thank you. The recommendation will proceed. Okay, I believe, unless anyone has anything else, we're done, unless, do you have a director's report perhaps, or anything like that?
I, a short one, actually, on a couple of personnel matters, which we don't typically report on very often to the Planning Commission, but two of them are sitting in the room tonight, so I thought I'd take advantage of the moment here to do that. So Miriam, the question actually, I think it might have come through public testimony, the question came up earlier about what on earth is the planning department going to do now that David Goodman has left? Well, I have an answer for that. We all miss, we all miss Mr. Goodman. You can, you can find him out in rural King County wandering around. You need to talk to him, so. Anyway, Miriam Leitner is our, as of May 1, is our newly-minted senior management analyst, replacing David. And then we have been in process looking to backfill then Miriam's current position as of, as of May 1, or as close to as possible. So, so congratulations, Miriam.
Congratulations.
On the spot. The second item, we've, we've actually had a secret spy in the audience tonight who has refused to get up to make public comment or go to the podium for public testimony at the hearing. I'm a little nervous about saying her name, because I've been struggling with it, because it has a twist to it. Avriel Batie, Beatty, is, as of today, our new and very first in Sammamish's history, principal planner. And she comes to us from really a very progressive career at the city of San Jose, California, and has relocated up here, and her family will be in tow here shortly when the school year is over with. And we are very happy to have her. She will be primarily focused, at least for now, over in our development review and of the department, working with David Pyle and our planners that do development review, front counter customer service, and the such. So we're very happy to have her. She's very courageous on her first day here to come to an evening meeting and soak in the Planning Commission, but yes, so welcome, and we're very happy to have you.
Does this mean if commissioners misbehave, they have to go to the principal's office?
We'll discuss that at our next check-in meeting. How's that?
So since you're new, and I just want to test, you said you're from San Jose? Where was, right, where was the birds filmed? Big old day.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for this evening. Would someone make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn this evening. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Thank you, everyone, we are adjourned.